Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for coming out. And our online viewers, we welcome you again to another session of the Book of Revelation. And I hope that it will be a blessing to each one of you. And before we start, I think I'd like to have a word of prayer for asking God's blessing. Heavenly Father, the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, we pray that you would give to us today the Spirit of wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of Christ, that the eyes of our understanding would be enlightened, and that we might be able to comprehend, Lord, just all that you have for us, the hope of your calling, and all the riches of the glory of your inheritance in the saints, exceeding greatness of your power to us, word who believe according to the working of your mighty power. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. I was touched to get an email this week from one of our viewers who was saying to me how she was so moved by God's mercy and grace in saving people during the tribulation period. And I thought, I'll just review what we did last week and what we have done. Of course, in the chapter 13, we had the rise of the Antichrist, that's the one who is against Christ, and the false prophet. And in chapter 14, we have the 144,000, which we had earlier in chapter 7. But this is God's mercy. He sent 144,000 Jewish men to evangelize during the tribulation period. He sent two prophets from the Old Testament, Moses and Elijah, or Moses and Enoch, we don't know. But two of them, who came to Jerusalem and who were preaching the gospel in Jerusalem. And then last week, we found out that he sent three angels in chapter 14, three angels. The first angel flew and kept preaching the gospel around the world. And I remember I mentioned to you how shocking that must have been. Now whether that's an angel, or a satellite, or whatever, but it's being preached, the gospel is being preached around the world. And then the second angel came and said, "The economic system has fallen, it's fallen." The third angel said, "Don't take the mark of the beast, don't take it," warning people. And the more I thought about it, the more I thought, no one, no one will be able to stand before God and say, "I never heard the gospel. I don't know about Jesus Christ, I never heard of him." No one will be able to say that, because these angels will fly or cover every country, every inhabited area, remote mountainous people will hear the gospel. And the 144,000 men will do greater works than missionaries have ever done. I think I've said that before, and so on, so on. So there will be no excuse on that day when we all stand before the Lord. There will be no excuse of anyone saying, "I never heard." And so that's where we are. Now today, we're starting chapter 15. And again, chapter 15 is like a pause. You know, we have a prelude, we have a pause. We've had terrible judgments, we've had the seal judgments, and we've had the trumpet judgments. So now we're having a pause, okay, a break, okay? And we're gonna have the song of Moses and the song of the Lamb. And I'd like to start reading this to you, chapter 15 of the Book of Revelation. "Then I saw another sign in heaven, great and marvelous." I'd like you to notice "I saw," John is an eyewitness. "I saw," he said, "a sign in heaven, great and marvelous, seven angels having seven last plagues; for in them the wrath of God is complete." It's over. This is the "it," it's gonna destroy everything. "And I saw something," again, "I saw," "something like a sea of glass mingled with fire, and those who have the victory over the beast," that's over the Antichrist, "over his image and over his mark and over the number of his name, standing on the sea of glass, having harps of God." Obviously, of course, maybe John is thinking of the Red Sea in Moses' time, and the people were standing there on the shore, and they saw the sea there like a sea of glass that turned red with the blood of Pharaoh's army. And all the people who did not take the mark are there, every one of them. And they have depended on God for their daily food. You know that during this time, they weren't able to buy or sell, so they had to depend on God for their daily food. And so there they are, all of those who have not taken the mark. Verse 3, "They sing the song of Moses, the servant of God, and the song of the Lamb." Now, the song of Moses was redemption. Oh, physically, we're getting across the Red Sea, we're walking across it. The song of the Lamb is a spiritual Exodus. One is a physical Exodus, that's Moses' time, but now, this is a spiritual Exodus. And they have been redeemed from the power of sin and Satan. Isn't that wonderful? No longer under his power. Now, here we have the song of the Lamb. "Great and marvelous are your works, Lord God Almighty; just and true are your ways, O King of the saints; who shall not fear you? O Lord, glorify your name; for you alone are holy; for all the nations shall come and worship before you; for your judgments have been manifested." That's the song of the Lamb. Verse 5, "After these things I looked, and behold, the temple of the tabernacle of the testimony in heaven, of course, was open. And out of the temple," now, so this is being sent by God, "out of the temple came the seven angels having seven plagues; and they are clothed in pure bright linen and have their chest skirted with golden bands." So in other words, these are like, these angels are dressed like high priests, okay? And here they are. Then, "one of the four living creatures," do you remember when we started in chapter 4 and chapter 5? We were, we were inside the throne of God. And remember, there were four big, huge angels and the 24 elders, remember that? One on one side of the throne, and the others on the other side of the throne, okay? So one of those big four angels, one of the four living creatures, gave to the seven angels seven gold bowls full of the wrath of God, who lives forever and ever. Okay, just try to imagine this, I'd like you to use your imagination. So here you have one huge angel, and he's coming to the seven. There are seven standing there, okay, in the throne room. And he gives each one a bowl. I don't know, like salad bowl, I don't know what kind of a bowl, but a bowl. And inside that bowl is the wrath of God. Because God is finished now with us human beings. He has been merciful, he has been patient, he has tried his best to get our attention. Even the other day, I heard someone say, someone asked me, "Do you think this COVID-19 is a judgment?" And I said, "Yes, I believe God is trying to get our attention. Will you repent? Will you turn to God? Will you go back and to the church?" and so on, so forth. And I believe it is, because this is universal. This COVID-19 is in every country. I don't know if there's hardly a country that has escaped this, or an island, as far as I know. It has been universal. Okay, verse 8 is very important, I'd like to read it now. "The temple was filled with smoke," and that's the glory of God. The smoke is the presence of God, the glory of God. "from the glory of God and from his power; and no one was able to enter the temple." No one was able to enter the temple till the seven plagues and the seven angels were completed. I'm just gonna read what the commentary says about this. "No one was able to enter, enter the presence of God." Right now, during this age of grace, you and I can come into the throne room. We can come boldly into the throne of grace, the Book of Hebrews says. We can come boldly into the throne of grace here. Now, the commentary says, "No one was able to enter. The mercy seat is now inaccessible. No further petitions or intercessions, no more prayers, no more prayers. We'll be heard until the final judgment is completed." The seventh bowl is emptied, okay? So now, no more petitions, no more intercessions will be heard until the final judgment, the seventh bowl is completed. Up to this time, God has been merciful, trying to reach sinners. But this is what, and I thought this was such a tragic statement, but our eternal reign with Christ won't begin until all evil is destroyed by his judgment. This is a terrible time of judgment. Now, we go to chapter 16 here, and here, we're going to have the seven bowls, okay? We're told about them here, the angel comes, he gives the seven angels the seven bowls, okay? "Then I heard a loud voice," again, John is eyewitness, "from the temple saying to the seven angels, 'Go and pour out the bowls of the wrath of God on the earth.'" What a job these angels, these seven angels have, to pour out the wrath of God on the earth. Okay, here's the first bowl, verse 2. "So the first went," that's the first angel, "went and poured out his bowl upon the earth; and a foul and loathsome sore came upon the men who had the mark of the beast and those who worshipped his image." So who gets the judgment? Who is getting judged? It's the wicked. It's those people who have taken the mark and have worshipped the beast, okay, the Antichrist. Anyone who worships the Antichrist, anyone who takes his mark, these judgments are for those people. And this, these bowls of judgment, some say, some commentaries say, "This is cancerous sores that come on people, malignant sores that come," okay? These judgments are different from the trumpet judgments and the seal judgments. The bowl judgments are complete and universal, let me just say this first. This will hit every wicked person in every country of the world. They will have cancerous sores or malignant sores. So this is one of the differences. The trumpet judgments, if you remember, I said were partial. One-third of mankind was afflicted, or one-fourth of mankind was afflicted. No, now it's all, it's complete. That's the first. The second difference is the bowl judgments, no, there's no more opportunity to repent. Under the bowl judgments, no more opportunity to repent. Under the seal judgments and the trumpet judgments, yes, you could repent. But now, it's over. The age of grace is over. And the third difference, the bowl judgments, people are directly attacked by all judgments. Under the trumpet judgments, of course, people were indirectly affected, some with hail, some with fire, some with blood, a falling star, a meteor, asteroid, something like that. But now, every person will be affected now. So those are the three differences between the bowl judgments and the trumpet judgments. Okay, let's continue. Number, the second bowl, okay, verse 3. "Then the second angel poured out his bowl on the sea, and it became blood of a dead man; and every living creature in the sea died." You might remember some of these from the Exodus, how in, under Moses, this was affected. Okay, all salt water is affected, the oceans and the seas, and all sea creatures, not just one-third or one-fourth, no, all salt water, all oceans and seas. All sea creatures will die, everything in the water will die. Okay, the third bowl, ah, okay, verse 4, it gives us what's happening for the third bowl. "Then the third angel poured out his bowl on the rivers and springs of water, and they became blood; and I heard," angel, "and I heard the angel of the waters saying, 'You are righteous, O Lord, the one who is and who was and who is to be; because you have judged these things; for they,' that's the wicked, 'have shed the blood of saints and prophets; and you have given them blood to drink, for it is their just due.'" Here we have the, this judgment of the angel, and all of the springs of water, fresh water, drinking water, have turned to blood. If you remember the judgments in Egypt, the river, the Nile River turned to blood. And who is saying this? "You are righteous, O Lord," who is saying that? Verse 7 tells us who's saying this. "And I heard another from the altar." Who is under the altar? Do you remember? The saints write, those who have been martyred are under the altar. "And I heard another from the altar saying, 'Even so, Lord God Almighty, true and righteous, are your judgments.'" This is the voice of the martyrs. And here we have this retributive judgment, equal weight with the crime. They, these wicked have murdered these people, beheaded them, killed them, and so on, and so forth. And so now, they are being killed. They have shed the blood of saints and prophets. And so they are now getting it in return, retributive justice. Okay, the fourth bowl, verse 8. "Then the fourth angel poured out his bowl on the sun; and power was given to him to scourge men with fire; and men were scorched with great heat; and they blasphemed the name of God, who has power over these plagues; and they did not repent and give him glory." Isn't it interesting? They know the judgment is coming from God, but they don't repent, no. Their hearts are hardened, very much like Pharaoh's heart was hardened in Egypt, you know? And this is a scorching sun, some call it global warming, whatever. But they do not repent and turn to God at this time. Now, the fifth bowl, darkness, you remember this one from the Exodus as well, darkness? Verse 10, "Then the fifth angel poured out his bowl on the throne of the beast." Okay, those first four affected creation, affected human beings and creation. Now, the next three judgments will affect the Antichrist, this man who is against Christ. These next three will affect him. "Then the fifth angel poured out his bowl on the throne of the beast," the throne of the beast, where he is in power. "And his kingdom became full of darkness; and they gnawed their tongues because of the pain. They blasphemed the God of heaven because of their pains and their sores; and did not repent of their deeds." So this is a plague of darkness and pain. And this falls on the Antichrist and on the nations, 10 nations that are following him. There are 10 nations that will be following him. Some call it the revised Roman Empire of Daniel, the book of Daniel. So this is what this is. Now, the sixth bowl, and this is the Battle of Armageddon. You have heard about the Battle of Armageddon? At least I think I have, since I was a young person going to this church. I heard about the Battle of Armageddon. Here it is, verse 12. "Then the sixth angel poured out his bowl on the great river Euphrates, and its water was dried up, so that the way of the kings from the east might be prepared; and I saw three unclean spirits, like frogs, coming out of the mouth of the dragon," that's Satan. These frogs are demonic beings that come out of the mouth of Satan, out of the mouth of the Antichrist, the beast, and out of the mouth of the false prophet. "For they are spirits of demons." I want you to know that the Book of Revelation actually interprets its own, sometimes symbolic, language, like frogs. What are these frogs? Well, John says, "They are the spirits of demons, performing signs which go out to the kings of the earth and the whole world to gather them to the battle of the great day of God Almighty." And now we hear a word from Jesus himself. "Behold, I am coming," I, that's Jesus, "I am coming as a thief. Blessed is he who watches and keeps his garments, his character, his life, lest he walk naked, and they see his shame." It's interesting, all of a sudden, in the middle of this terrible judgment, Jesus says, "I am coming, like a thief." And so keep your garments, keep your character, keep your personality, lest you walk naked. Now, verse 16, here's the interpretation of this, of the frogs. "And they gathered them," who, they, these demonic beings, these three frogs, these demonic beings gathered them together to the place called in Hebrew Armageddon. Okay? Now, I just wanna go back for a minute to this, the beginning here, the Euphrates. The Euphrates River is the boundary between the East and the West. And so nothing now can hold back the invading armies from the East. Now, these could be Asian nations following China. China feels that it's a superpower now, and that these Asian nations, it also could symbolize unhindered judgment now, coming from the East, the West, whatever. Now, they, these evil spirits, these frogs, these evil spirits that come out of the mouth of Satan, they originate from Satan. And Satan has given his power, as we have seen in chapter 13, to the Antichrist. So here is Satan, he gives his power to the Antichrist, and the Antichrist gives power to the false prophet. Remember, we said three, the unholy, unholy trinity, okay? Now, so who is in charge of these armies that are coming up against the Antichrist to Israel, to the valley of Megiddo? Who's in charge? The three demonic beings. And this is what is so hard, in a sense, for us to understand, because we can't see into the spirit like John is. John is seeing behind the scenes, so to speak. And he can see that the leaders of these armies are actually people who are leaders, generals, but who are controlled by Satan. And we look at these people and say, "Oh, isn't he a great leader? Wasn't Napoleon a great leader? Wasn't Hitler a great leader?" No, the German people were absolutely blind. They had no idea that Hitler was demonic, in a sense, demon-possessed, if you wanna put it very bluntly. Do you understand what I'm saying? And we too, if we are not walking close to the Lord, we can be easily deceived. And remember the false prophet? He looks like a lamb, gentle, kind, meek, very pious, very religious. But he speaks with the mouth of the dragon, Satan. So we get deceived. We look at the outward appearance and say, "Oh, isn't he a fine person?" We're looking at the outside. We don't see that that person, these, imagine, these armies that are being, that are coming for the Battle of Armageddon are completely controlled by this demonic power from Satan. And so what a terrible time this is here for it. So now, we are now, and verse 16. "And they gathered them together, and the place in Hebrew, Armageddon." Verse 17, oh, then the seventh, now this is the last. "The seventh angel poured out his bowl into the air; and a loud voice came out of the temple of heaven," so that God is behind this, "from the throne, saying, 'It is done, it is finished, it is done; and there were noises and thunderings and lightnings; and there was a great earthquake, such a mighty and great earthquake as had not occurred since men were on the earth.'" Okay, we'll just stop there. Okay, it is finished. This is the last, the judgment of the earth is finished. And this judgment is universal. It's done, the war against Satan is over, it's complete. This great earthquake, all the mountains will be leveled, all the islands will disappear, England, Philippines, every, every island will disappear, Newfoundland, whatever. All mountains leveled, that's the, that's the Rocky Mountains, that's the Himalayas, all the mountains will be leveled, will disappear. Hailstones, total global destruction. The Book of Zechariah in the Old Testament, Zechariah 4:4 describes this. The Book of Zechariah in the Old Testament, Zechariah 4:4 describes this. If you have time and you want to look this up. This is a terrible time, but it is finished. God's judgment of the earth is over. He has had enough with the wicked. He's not going to put up with any more. And so, it is done. Okay, verse 19. Here we go. "Now the great city," now, in John's day, that was Rome, the great city, "was divided in three parts, and the cities of the nations fell." So that would be Ottawa and all, New York, and all the cities of the nations all fell. Rome, having said divided into three parts, it just means that it's complete destruction. It doesn't mean actually that the city was that east section and the west section and the north section, it's not, no. It just means complete destruction. And Babylon represents, of course, he's using the word that great city, and John wouldn't dare use the word Rome, because if the Roman Empire, the Roman soldiers heard that John was talking about Roman Empire, then for sure he would be beheaded or killed. So he uses the word Babylon, okay? "The great city was divided into three parts, and the cities of the nations fell." That's the nations of the world. "The great Babylon was remembered before God to give her the cup of the wine of the fierceness of his wrath." Verse 20, "Then every island fled away," in other words, disappeared. "And the mountains were not found." Can you imagine the Himalayas? You couldn't find it, the Himalaya Mountains? I mean, they're the highest in the world. "were not found." "And great hail from heaven fell upon the men. Each hailstone weighed about a talent. Men blasphemed God because of the plague of the hail, since the plague was exceeding great." Imagine, they blasphemed God because of that, rather than repent, yeah. So he's using the word Babylon instead of using the word Rome and the Roman Empire and to cover this now. That's the Battle of Armageddon that you have heard about for so many years. God's final judgment on the wickedness of mankind. He has been patient up to now. He's been wanting people to repent, shouting it from the skies, from all over, and they haven't done it. And he said, "It's done now. It's finished. It is over. There's no more chance." These people, even with the hailstones, great hailstones hitting them, they still would not repent. And as I mentioned in a previous lesson, the reason their hearts are so extremely hard is because they have taken the mark of the beast. And once you take that mark, you become anti-God. You become a worshipper of the Antichrist, the one who is against Christ. And therefore, your whole heart, your soul, your mind becomes filled with evil, and you don't want to repent. It's hard for us to imagine that, because we have been taught all our years to be quick to repent, you know, quick to say sorry. But here, there'd be no longer any chance of that. So that is a very sad. But chapter 17 and chapter 18, where we're leaving off here, we'll continue in chapter 19. But chapter 17 and 18, John gives us, and I think this is so interesting, these two chapters, 17 and 18, give us the reasons behind Armageddon. Now, we've just read about Armageddon. We've just read about the destruction, the removal of all islands, all mountains, everything has been destroyed. John now, it seems like God has opened his eyes, and in here, he gives John the reasons. Okay, John, I'm going to give you two chapters here, in a sense, not really, because they didn't have chapters then. But I'm going to give you the reasons behind why I did what I did here. And so, in chapter 17, verse 1, "Then one of the seven angels who had the seven bowls," okay, "one of the seven angels who had one of the bowls came and talked with me." Isn't that interesting? That's so personal, eh, to have an angel come and talk to you, okay? Now, what's he saying? Saying to me, "Come, I will show you the judgment of the great harlot who sits on many waters." Okay, the great harlot or prostitute, in some of your translations, you will have the great prostitute or the great harlot. The woman is Rome. But here, he will not use the word Rome, because, for political reasons in John's day. But Babylon is Rome, in chapter 7 and verse 5, you'll hear that, you'll see that, in chapter 18 and verse 2. Okay, so, "Judgment of the great harlot who sits on many waters, with whom the kings of the earth committed fornication, and the inhabitants of the earth were made drunk with the wine of her fornication." Now, this chapter is very difficult. I'll just tell you upfront, for me, chapter 13 and chapter 17 are very difficult, because there's a lot of symbolism here, okay? A lot of symbolism. But the book translates what the symbolism is. And here, judgment, this is judgment of the false prophet and any religious system opposed to Christ. "Sits on many waters," refers to, in verse 1, "sits on many waters," rules over many, many people. Now, there's a suggestion, could this be the one-world religion? It's a suggestion, suggestion. One-world religion, any religious system that merges and manipulates governments whenever it is to her advantage. Okay, I think what I'll do is I'll just summarize before we get into detail here. Chapter 17 and 18 is God's judgment on the false prophet. The false prophet is the false religious head, if you want to say. It's the religious section of the Antichrist government. Here he is, he's in charge of religion in the Antichrist government system. Then you have the economic system here that he's in charge of. But he uses, the Antichrist uses religion to gain the approval of the masses of people. He uses religion, because he knows that deep down inside all of us human beings, there is a desire to know God, or to know who is in charge of my life anyway. And there is this desire within all of us to worship. We were born that way, to worship. And so, here, in this chapter, we have the judgment, first of all, of the false prophet. And he represents the religious systems of the world. And they're all put into one, as people today are wanting to have a one-world religion, you know? And we talked about that last week, I believe, no church, no Bible, everybody just believes whatever kind of thing. It's one-world religion. And religion is something the Antichrist will use. In here, we have it riding on top of the Antichrist. This scarlet woman is riding on top of the beast, like an animal and a person riding on top of the animal, something like that. And so, the animal carries the beast, carries the false prophet for a while, only for a short time. And then the Antichrist will say, "I don't want you anymore. I don't want religion like what you got, this one world is, get out." And the Antichrist will throw away the false prophet and this false, false religious system, okay? He'll do away with it. "And he worshiped me only." And he sits up his image in the temple, the abomination of desolation, spoken of by Daniel the prophet, okay? And so, he uses, the Antichrist uses religion. I think that's the easiest way to say it. The Antichrist will use religion for a while, but only for a short time, the Bible says. We'll read that here, only for a short time. Then he gets rid of it, of religion, okay? And he takes over control himself as the supreme God of the world, so to speak, okay? I've just tried to simplify it, so that maybe it will help as we go through this here a little bit. Okay, chapter 17, okay. Now, to commit fornication here, in verse 2, this religious harlot, this, some refer to it as Rome and the religious system, but it can be any, altogether, all of the religious beliefs coming together. To commit fornication, look at verse 2, "with the kings of the earth." In other words, all the countries of the world will get involved in this false religious system and commit adultery. Now, or fornication. Fornication is the same as adultery, and actually, fornication means any sexual misconduct. Any, it's just not fornication, and we used to think of it as premarital sex or something like that. Fornication and adultery, fornication includes all of it. Actually, the Greek word, let me just give you the Greek for fornication, is pornou. We get our word pornography from the Greek word here. Pornou is pornography. And if you take this metaphorically, it describes spiritual adultery. What is spiritual adultery? It's idol worship, idolatry, idolatry. Spiritual fornication is worshiping, okay? God wants us to love Him and only Him. The Antichrist wants you to worship an idol, His image, a statue, okay? And this is idolatry, when you worship an idol, a statue, that's idolatry. God is spirit, and we worship Him in spirit and in truth. So that's where we get the pornography, the work, it comes from a fornication. Spiritual adultery, which is idolatry, the worship of idols. Anything that's worshipped in place of God is an idol. Religious, Hal Lindsey calls it religious prostitution. That's what Hal Lindsey calls it. And Hal Lindsey brings in witchcraft, the occult, the new age. All of that is involved in this idolatry, okay? Witchcraft, occult, horoscope, all of these things. Please be very careful not to involve, get involved in any of this kind of witchcraft. All these kinds of seances and all kinds of things that, these are witchcraft. This is guiding your life by the stars or something like, "Oh, my star today, I'm a luck, this is a lucky day for me." Now, there's no such thing as luck. As Christians, all of our days are guided by the Lord. He knows each day that we follow. And so, be very careful, sometimes, you know, I was really shocked, actually, last summer. I arrived in Canada in July, and after I spent my 14 days of quarantine, someone took me around, it was driving me around some of the towns here in the Ottawa Valley. And I was so shocked to see the god of the sun, the sun god, in the yards of some of the people. And I said to the person who was driving me, "Oh, that's a nice yard, but why have they got the sun god in that yard? That's a witchcraft symbol." The god of the sun, we don't worship the god of the sun. We worship the Creator who created the sun. Do you understand? Sometimes, and this person said, "They don't know. They don't realize that's witchcraft." So please be very careful getting involved in tattoos and all of these things that have to do with witchcraft. Sometimes you don't know it yourself, you don't realize it. "Oh, I bought it, I thought it was lovely." You did? I remember how God dealt with me when I came back from Buddhist countries. I had bought up souvenirs, and God dealt with me and said, "Ruth, you cannot have those in your house." I had, from Thailand, I had a beautiful big iron, bronze, bronze boat that the emperor, the king of Thailand, you know, it's an image of it. It was the candles, like seven candles or something in it, a candle holder. But the head of the boat was a dragon, okay, and a Buddha. And God dealt with me and said, "You throw that out?" I had, I was in Toronto at the time, at my sister's place, and I had to take that heavy, heavy bronze, beautiful boat and throw it in the trash in Toronto. He wouldn't let me keep it. So you've got to clean your house, so to speak, you know? With these things that maybe you didn't realize the meaning behind that. You just thought it was nice, like I did. So anyway, we must keep going here. So verse 3, "So he carried me away in the spirit." Okay, that means John is being taught something behind the scenes in the spirit. "And I saw a woman sitting on a scarlet beast," okay? I just explained that to you, a woman who would be the false prophet, sitting, representing the religious sector of the Antichrist. On a scarlet beast, scarlet means red, and Antichrist, red is the color of Satan, "which was full of names of blasphemy, having seven heads and ten horns." The seven heads are the seven nations, or the heads are the intelligence of the Antichrist, and the ten horns are the ten nations. "The woman was arrayed in purple and in scarlet." Okay, scarlet, as I just said, is red, representing the dragon. Purple is the color of the rich. If you ever see a queen or a king, they have a purple robe. Okay, that's the color of the rich and powerful. "And adorned with gold precious stones and pearls, having her hand a golden cup full of abominations." Okay, all this jewelry, this gaudy adornment suggests her wealth. So this religious system is very rich, okay? And a golden cup full of abominations. Abominations are idol worships, idol worship. "And the filthiness of her fornication. And on her forehead was, a name was written." "I saw," now here's John, eyewitness, "I saw the woman drunk." Here's what was written on her forehead. Oh, just back here, prostitutes in Rome at this time, if you were a prostitute, the Roman government made you put your name here on your forehead, you know? Sally or whoever, you know? So your name was written on your forehead. And so John saw, on her forehead, a name was written, and what was it? Mystery Babylon, or we can put Rome, because John was scared to use the word Rome, the great. "the mother of harlots, the mother of idolatry, idol worship, and of the abominations of the earth. I saw the woman drunk with the blood of the saints, martyred, all the Christians that had been martyred, and with the blood of the martyrs of Jesus. And when I saw her, I marvelled with great amazement." Now, here is John. He sees the false prophet system, the religious system riding on the back of the political system, okay? We have an anti-Christian society or civilization riding on and undergirded by an anti-Christian political power, that's what we have here. We have an anti-Christian society riding on and undergirded by an anti-Christian political power. This goes back to chapter 13, of course. Okay, now, so this is the false religious system, and it's being carried by that. Verses 7, down, actually, to the, almost to the end, will explain what has just been written. "But the angel said to me, 'Why do you marvel? I will tell you.'" So here's the interpretation, that's what I said, the Book of Revelation interprets itself. "I will tell you the mystery of the woman and of the beast, the Antichrist that carries her, which has the seven heads and the ten horns. The beast that you saw was and is not, and will ascend out of the bottomless pit," you know, that's the Antichrist, "and go to perdition. And those who dwell on the earth will marvel whose names are not written in the Book of Life from the foundation of the world, when they see the beast that was and is not, and yet is." Hal Lindsey actually explains this perhaps better than the... He explains verse 9, or verse 8, "the beast you saw is the old Roman Empire." The Roman Empire ended in the fourth century, okay, AD, or the fifth, about that. The Roman Empire had Latin as the language. As a student at the high school, I had to take Latin. But we don't speak Latin anymore. The only thing that remains of the Roman Empire today, today, would be the Roman Catholic Church. That would be the only thing that remains today of the Roman Empire. The rest of it is all gone. So in verse 9, "the seven heads are seven mountains, symbolizing seven empires, worldwide powers." Or some see it as Rome, and the city and its religious power. Now, in verse 10, Hal Lindsey says, "the seven kings," that five are past, okay? Verse 9, "here is the mind which has wisdom. The seven heads are seven mountains on which the woman sits. There are also seven kings; five have fallen, one is, and the other has not yet come. And when he comes, he must continue a short time. The beast that was and is not is himself also the eighth, and is the seventh, and is going to perdition." All right, just let me back up here. "The seven kings are the seven past empires of our world," that you get in the Book of Daniel. You get Egypt, the first empire, Assyria, second. Babylon is the third world empire, Persia, the fourth. Greece is the fifth. This is in Daniel, chapter 7, okay? The present empire would be the Roman Empire at John's time, at John's time, the present. And like I said, it ended in the fourth or fifth century. The future empire would, will be, now, again, this is according to what Hal Lindsey is saying, the revised Roman Empire, the ten toes. Remember of the Daniel's image that Daniel saw, he had ten toes, okay? Now, in verse, let's just go on, verse 10, "there are also seven kings; five have fallen, one is, and the other has not yet. And when he comes, he must continue just for a short time." The verse 11, "the beast that was and is not is himself also the eighth, and is of the seven, and is going to perdition." The eighth king would be the Antichrist, who is the dictator ruling over these, the revised Roman Empire. So the ten kings are the ten toes. And in verse 12, "the ten horns which you saw are ten kings, who have received no kingdom as yet, but they receive authority for one hour as kings of the beast." One hour means a very short time. "These ten countries will rule with the Antichrist, but only one hour." And that's not exactly an hour, but just means a short time, period of time. Verse 13, "these are of one mind, and they will give their power and authority to the beast." These ten nations or countries will give their authority to the beast. "These will make war with the Lamb, and the Lamb will overcome them." This is the Battle of Armageddon. Remember, this chapter gives us the reason behind the Battle of Armageddon. "They're gonna make war with Jesus, and the Lamb will overcome them. For he is lord of lords and king of kings, and those who are with him are called chosen and faithful." Hallelujah. "Those who are with him are called chosen and faithful." "Then he said to me, 'The waters which you saw, where the harlot sits, are peoples' multitudes, nations, and tongues. And the ten horns which you saw on the beast, these will hate the harlot, make her desolate and naked, eat her flesh and burn her with fire. For God has put it into their hearts to fulfill his purpose, to be of one mind and to give their kingdom to the beast, until the works of God are fulfilled.'" In verse 18, "and the woman whom you saw is that great city which reigns over the kings of the earth." And here we have it. God is in control. God rules over all. And God is getting rid of that false prophet and that false religious system. He's moving it out of the way. The false prophet will realize that he was used, he was just used by the Antichrist. And he will regret that, of course. Let's pray. Hallelujah. Lord, we're so thankful that we have been redeemed by the blood of the Lamb, that we are among the chosen of your people. We are so grateful and so extremely thankful to be called a child of God, that we are in your family, and that you are in control of the nations of our world. You are in control of the battles that will take place on our planet. And Father, we say, "Thy kingdom come, and Thy will be done on earth." In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Thank you.